Father God, we humbly come before you and just give our heartfelt gratitude for all you do for us, Father. We just lift up this community up to you. We lift up this meeting up to you as well, Father God. We just ask for your guidance and for your direction and for your discernment. We ask a special blessing on every family in this community, Father God, and we just thank you for everything that you do for us, and I pray that we never take that for granted. We ask for your protection over the men and women who fight for our freedom every day, Father God. Again, we just give you thanks for who you are, for what you've done, for what you're doing, for what you're going to do, and it's in your name that we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Let's record show, we have a forum. Councilman Ellis will lead us in the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. It is at this time in our meeting that we are always pleased to welcome visitors and receive public comments. We would like to thank everybody for being here tonight. And at this time, we will receive public comment if anybody would like to do that. If not, then we will go ahead and move on to our agenda. First thing we would like to do tonight is the approval of the minutes of the meeting of January 12th of this year. I trust you all reviewed those, and I'll make a motion that we approve them. Second thing. Do we have a second? Is there any questions? Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're going to vary a little bit from our agenda, and we're going to ask to have the Youth Advisory Council report next.
The Youth Advisory Council would like to thank the community and all the council members and staff for their support in our fundraiser and our support altogether. The money that we got from our fundraiser was used to go to Colleen for our youth summit. Six members went. We listened to speakers both days. There was one guy that knew five languages, and he was very funny. He was a pretty big comedian. We also had a speaker that was from the Fort Hood. She was a widow from the doctor of Fort Hood, and she spoke to us for a while about it. And then the guy who's building the memorial spoke to us also. There was a lot of good workshops that they had, and those were really fun. We learned at our meeting today about the elections, and that if there's a vacant spot or a vacant spot is open when a council member decides to say that they were going to apply for a new position. We also learned a lot of new police things, and we learned a lot by the council members explaining things in very good detail. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions about the report? All right. Thanks a lot. Okay. Next thing we would like to do is to turn the floor over to Mr. Fields, and he is going to present our annual audit report.
I think everyone should have a copy of it. Turn over to the table of contents. Let's briefly review the information that's contained in the financial statements where you'll know as we go through my report back to you as a council what we're talking about, what we're issuing our opinion on. As we look at it in the financial section, you'll see our independent auditor's report that's a report back to you, the council will go through that tonight. The next thing you have is our discussion, management discussion analysis, required information is prepared by your staff. We review it. We will not go through that. I encourage you to look at that to give you a comparison of the last two years. It's kind of a narrative description of the financial statements themselves. The basic financial statements, what we issue our report on, the first ones are government-wide statements we'll go through, and we'll go through our fund financial statements briefly. The notes to the financial statements will give you additional information on how the financial statements are prepared and additional disclosures concerning your city itself. We will not go through all the details of those. I think I'd encourage you to read through those as you have time. There's a lot of information on that about your city. The last thing is required, some information is required by the Government Accounting Standards Board. Those things are required to be in there. We have our budget comparison for our general fund and economic development. We consider those to be major funds by their definition. So therefore, we're required to put budget comparisons that show your original budget and the amended budget with the actual figures that are included. The other two schedules we're required to put in there is schedule of funding for our Texas Municipal Retirement System and also schedule of funding for our Texas Emergency Service Retirement System and Fire Department Retirement System. If you'll turn over to page 11, the first thing we'll look at is my report back to you as a council. Let's just go over one page, and let's look at my report on page one. As we look at my report back to you as a council, the first paragraph gives you a description of the financial statements that we are issuing our opinion on. The second paragraph is the management responsibilities for the financial statements. The management is responsible for the financial statements and preparation of the financial statements. And opting internal controls to make sure that they are free of material mistake, the statement and whether due to fraud or error. The third paragraph is gives you a description of what our responsibility is. Our responsibility is to express an opinion on the financial statements. Our audit is contained in accordance with generally accepted opting standards, and those standards require that we plan to perform the audit to obtain a reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free of material mistake. The next paragraph explains what an audit is, how we get our procedures that we perform, and the way we go about those. The nature thing about that is your internal controls. We review your internal controls as they apply to the procedures that we adopt. We do not issue an opinion in internal control for procedures in the financial statements themselves by themselves. The last paragraph is the opinion paragraph, the most important paragraph that's included in there, and briefly summarize it for you. It says, "The following financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position and the change in financial position and cash flow for year-to-year ending September 30th of 2014 in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles." What that means to you as a council, that's an unmodified opinion, and that's what you want, that's what our debtors want, and so forth. On page two, as I mentioned before, we acquired some of the information that we went through on the table of contents. It's not part of the basic financial statements. We review and reconcile those back to the financial statements themselves, but we don't issue a separate opinion on them. Any questions over my opinion? Back to you as a council. If not, let's turn to page 11 now, and let's look at the financial statements. The first set of financial statements we go through, we've talked about it in the past, are your government-wide financial statements and what we mean by that. We take all your fund types that are together, and we add them all together in your governmental activities, and we add all your business-type activities together also to be your water and sewer fund that you have. We take all the other funds and record those as one particular fund, just like any other business enterprise. As you look down through there, the cash receivables, the notes receivable, you're familiar with those different things. We do accruals that are included in here that's not included in the other financial statements. We also add your capital assets, as you can see, and also record depreciation that is there. Under liabilities, again, you'll see that we accrue interest on your debt that's there, but we do not do in the fund financial statements. And we record all the liabilities that you have at year-end. It is recorded on the particular financial statement. The first thing under our net position is our net investment in capital assets, and that's just the capital asset, less depreciation, less the debt that's applicable to those. The restricted fours are other funds that we have, the funds that you have set aside for each one of those. And as we look at those, you can look at our debt service, our street maintenance, our drug seizure money that we have, our economic development, our hotel motel tax. As we talk about our other funds in just a moment, it'll include all those except the economic development, which will be separate, which you'll know which funds those are. The remaining portion is going to be your unrestricted net financial position at the end of the year. If we'll turn the page, we'll look at the statement of activities. It shows you the operations using the same principles that we talked about in the prior statement that we had. As you look across the top, under expenses, again, it's going to be a little bit different than what we do with our budget because we, again, include all, we remove all the capital out expenditures that you had during the year. We record depreciation, we record interest as accrued during, at the end of the year. Charges for services are specifically identified with those particular governmental activities that we have. Same thing with our grants, our grants and contributions that we have are specifically identified with those activities. The far right-hand side shows you the net costs of your citizens of each one of our governmental activities based on this financial statement. The business activities that we have, water and sewer, recorded the same way that we recorded in our fund financial statements. But as you look at the bottom of the page, we record all your general revenue. That's not allocated back to our governmental activities that we have, our property taxes, sales taxes, franchise taxes, our occupancy taxes, and our interest that we earn on our investments during the year, and you'll see our transfers that we have between the funds. For the year, you'll see that we had an increase in our governmental activities, a small decrease in our business-type activities after adjustments were made. Questions over the first two? If not, let's look at page 14. We're going to go back and start now, talking about our governmental funds and our fund-type statements. This is the way with budget. This is what you have, the reports that you received during the year are prepared on the same basis as what the financial statements for the governmental-wide financial statements, the fund financial statements are prepared by. As we look across the top of the page, the general fund is where we count for everything that's not required to be accounted for somewhere else. Our economic development is our economic development fund. Our other governmental funds, as we mentioned a while ago, we talked about, is all included in there. They're not required to be broke out separate, as we talked about. You'll see your cash that we had on hand at the end of the year, our property taxes that are receivable, accounts that we had at the end of the year that were due, paving wings that we've had some time. Notes receivable is going to be our money, and economic development where they've made loans out that are being paid back over time that we have. Due from other funds, we owe money from one fund to the other. This is a majoring point that was at the end of the year, at year September 30th of 2014. Due from other governments is going to be the property taxes that we had that were still, that were collected in September that were collected in October that were due in September. Under our liabilities, you have your accounts payable or the amount that was due at September 30th, and we've already talked about the amount that's due to the funds. Our deferred enforcement resources is going to be your property taxes. In this particular fund, we don't recognize property taxes until they're actually collected, so therefore, it's an offset, as you see above, in your property tax. And our fund balance, you'll see our non-spendable fund balance, our paving wings are not current collections within a reasonable grid of time to be vested in next year, so therefore, they're called non-spendable. Then you'll see our restricted funds that we've talked before. These are the balances at the end of the year, September 30th of 2014, that we had in each one of those. The assigned fund balance amount is the amount that we have in our capital projects fund that we have set aside to be used in our general fund. Then you have your unassigned fund balance at the end of the year. Questions over the balance? If not, if you look at page 15, it's going to give you the explanation that the difference in the two statements, it reconciles them back together. It's going to be, we'll record your capital assets, property taxes, payables, and our landfill closure cost, all those things that record in the government-wide statements that we do not record in the fund's financial statements. Let's look at page 16. Let's look at the statement of revenue and expenditures and change in fund balance for our governmental funds. Again, the same description at the top as your fund types. Our revenue is going to be, as you go through your budget and the reports that you've got, are going to be the same breakdown, same descriptions that we had during the year. And as we look at your expenditures, they're going to be the same for each one of our departments that we have. Your capital expenditures, again, are recorded in here. Under debt service, we only record the principal and interest payments that we make during the current year are shown. You'll see the difference in our revenue expenditures for the year before our transfers that we have, our operating transfers in and operating transfers out. We borrowed money that we had in this year that was paid off in the first October, that's shown in there for note proceeds. Comes back to the net change for the year for each one of our different fund types that we had. We had an increase in the general fund, a small decrease in the economic development, and the other funds increased. Comes back to your end-of-fund balance that we talked about in the prior statement. Questions that you might have over the fund balance? If not, as we look at page 17, again, it's going to reconcile the difference in the operating statements with the two together. So let's look at your statement of net position for our enterprise fund on page 18, which is our water and sewer fund. If we look at the financial position of September 30th, again, it's going to be the same information that you're familiar with, your cash receivables that were due, our restricted assets, our meters deposits that we have that are helped by the city for your water customers. The capital assets are recorded in this particular fund, less depreciation if in the year are payable, that we had, also our customer deposit comes back to your net investment in capital assets, and then our unrestricted net position of our enterprise fund, which is our water and sewer fund. Let's look at page 19. Let's look at the changes in revenue and expenses in our net fund position of the water and sewer fund that we had during the year. You'll see the operating revenue that we had, our operating expenses, which are recorded by classifications that we had. You'll see the net operating income that we had before our interest income, gives your total operating revenue, and then our transfers out that we made during the year, shows the small decrease that we had in the net position. Questions over the financial statement? Those are your basic financial statements. Those are the cash flow statements that you can look through. Those, I'd encourage you to look through the rest of the financial statements. They give you a very basic overview of the financial statement. I'll answer any questions concerning the financial statements, the audit itself, or anything that the council might have at this time. If not, we appreciate David, and we appreciate all the help he gives. Also, when we're here, we ask a lot of questions and get a lot of information. We call it out and spread it out, and they're willing to work with us. They listen to all the suggestions we have, so we appreciate working with them and the help that they give. And appreciate the opportunity to serve the city. If you have any questions, you can call me or call David again, and we'll try to answer those questions as you may have time to go through.
We also want to thank our staff for providing all the information that you used, and appreciate you and your staff and all the diligence and labor involved and leadership pairing this force.
Appreciate that.
Do you guys have any questions? We need to receive the audit report. I'll make a motion that we receive the audit report from Randall Fields.
I'll second it.
Do we have a second? Is there any more discussion? Not? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Another thing we'd like to do is to consider a letter of understanding with Randall Field for future audit services. This is for a three-year contract?
Yes.
And I'll make a motion that we approve them?
Second.
We have a second? Any other discussion? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We want to thank you again, and we look forward to seeing you about a year from now.
Thank you all.
You missed a lot of fun earlier in the Youth Advisory Council meeting because David was trying to explain exactly the primary purpose of this audit.
I wish I'd been here. You shouldn't have been here.
He actually just summed it up in one statement. He said, "It's actually to see if we got any money, and if anybody steal it."
They say he was very informative about it.
Come to some of the Youth Advisory Council meetings sometimes are more informative than ours are, and so it's pretty cool. But we want to thank you again.
Thank you all. We appreciate the opportunity to serve the city.
Look forward to doing this.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Next thing on our agenda is to order the city general election to be held May 9th of this year, and this will order an election for the position of mayor. Would I like to expand on that, or is it self-explanatory?
General election to elect a mayor for the next three years. It's a regular?
It's a general election.
I'll make a motion to order that general election.
We'll second that. We have a motion and a second to order that election for the position of mayor? Is there any other question for discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. The next thing we'd like to do is to order a city special election to fill a vacancy for District Two to be held also on May 9th, and this will be a special election to fill vacancy for the unexpired term of District Two that expires in May of 2016.
We'll explain some about that. There's a council member that represents District Two that has actually filed to run in the general election for mayor. According to the Constitution, once you make that declaration to run for another office, you vacate the current office you serve. However, in Article 16, Section 17 of the Constitution, that person is required to hold over in that position until the next person is qualified. So this will be a special election for that unexpired term. It's going to be a one-year term. And the dates to file for that election are?
Actually, after council orders that special election through March the 9th, 5:00 deadline on March the 9th. Which is different, if I could say, which is different than the general election. That deadline is 5:00 on February 27th. So the filing period for the special election will be March the 9th, which is a longer period of time.
Same period of time, it just starts later.
Yeah, it just starts later.
I'll make a motion that we order that special election to fill a vacancy at District Two?
Second.
Do we have a second? Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. The next thing we'd like to do is to consider ordinance number 0476, Day 0215. It also orders a special election to amend the City of Mioshiu City Charter. Want to expand on that?
Well, you know, the council is having a workshop, has agreed to adopt an ordinance or agreed to the wording or the changes that they believe need to be made to the city's charter. There'll be 28 propositions that'll be submitted to the voters for their approval. Each one, voter will vote on each proposition, not all of them. One and a half.
Individually.
One thing, this is a little different. I mean, you look at the two before, calling a general election, a different special election. Y'all do by order. Y'all have always done by order, and that is certainly permissible. We do this one as an ordinance out of an abundance of caution because the statute, it says ordinance, and so we do it to follow the law. And second, it will give somebody a paper trail, you know, to have that in there as an ordinance. So if you're wondering why this one's a little different, it's just the way the laws are written a little differently.
And there will be some required notifications that we have to send to each voter by mail, so they'll have a chance to look at that. Hopefully, the council will consider holding a public hearing to maybe explain if it is going to be a rather lengthy ballot.
I think that'd be very beneficial for the public.
Publication requirements are all different on this charter amendment also, so.
Because it's a very important document. It's essentially the constitution of the city, and hopefully, when we have our public hearing, we get Robert to come in and make that available to all citizens, those that show up and those that choose to watch it tomorrow.
We have a motion, and I'll second it, to order that special election by that ordinance. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Mayor, can I say one other thing?
Yes, please do.
Where we're on the election, or I know as we've talked the last couple of months about the elections we're going to have, we talked about a street maintenance sales tax election that we would have to redo because it's been three years. As we did some further research to look at the wording and specifically how to do that, we learned that that election's to be held over four years. So that election will be next month, not this month.
Sounds good.
So if you're wondering why there's not an order on here to call for a special election for sales tax, street sales tax.
Well, and then after, after you do the mailouts and stuff on the charter changes, then we could schedule a public hearing?
Sure. Yeah, we'll have to look at the timeframe that we have to send those out.
They have inflation review, then we can?
They'll be published in the paper.
All right. Sounds good. Okay. The next thing we'd like to do is to consider an election contract with the Mioshiu Independent School District. Man, we appreciate you doing that.
Happy to do it.
That just pretty much simplifies that election day to where everybody can attend to our location.
And we feel like it's a great way to serve the voters of the community, the school district, the city, and the hospital district. All elections will take place early voting and election day at City Hall. That's what that contract does. Actually, I'll meet with the school on Thursday, and if the council approves the contract, then we'll make it present it to the school board then.
I'll make a motion that we approve that contract.
Second.
We have a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, approve the contract with Mioshiu Independent School District? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We would also, in the next thing on our agenda, is to consider an election contract with the Mioshiu Area Hospital District, and that's basically the same thing.
It's the same thing. I met with the hospital board last week, and they approved the contract, so it's still down before council.
So we have a motion to approve that contract, and I'll second it. Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next thing we'd like to do is to consider resolution number R703, Day 0215, authorizing the submission of a Texas Community Development Block Grant Program application to the Texas Department of Agriculture. And I'm going to let you explain that a little bit.
Well, it's just the city authorizing, or the city council authorizing the city to apply for CBGT funds for infrastructure improvement. If we're, what we proposed, what is from staff, is to replace some water, undersized dilapidated water lines. This is big for a grant for $275,000. The city will match that with $59,000. So this is to submit the application.
And in that authorization, it also allows the mayor to act as the city's chief executive officer?
That'll be to authorize signature for the documents and the results. Did I make a motion with that said resolution?
Do I?
Said I make a motion with that said resolution.
We have a motion to pass that resolution, and I'll second it. Any other questions? Discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next thing we'd like to do is to consider resolution number R704, Day 0215, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the administration for housing provider services for the home grant program. And that people doing the work will be H.J. Howko Services. We've already approved that.
Well, we submitted RFPs from administrators for this program. Well, we submitted RFPs from administrators for this program, we've been approved for the funding for this program. We received two RFPs, AJ Halco scored the highest on, according to the criteria, so Halco is certain that his staff recommends.
Same people that did the work last time?
Yes, yes. They worked Milschuu for years.
Any other questions? Not? I'll make a motion that we approve that resolution?
Second.
We have a second? Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next thing we'd like to do is to receive the Milschuu Police Department contact data report. And she, do you want to make comments about that, or?
Mayor, I'll make a very brief comment on this. As you well know, this is the annual report that the legislature requires every citizen to turn in, as to, as to track contacts with the, make sure there's any racial profiling going on. And with the report submitted by Dale Carmen this year, I'm very pleased with the numbers as you stated on your page, I think it's, well, mine says 53, I don't think that's going to be correct, but if we move about two-thirds of the way back, you'll see the chart, and you'll see that the numbers very closely match our new graphics. So we are pleased that reports that in him, and he reports, that our profile is in order.
Good job.
Thanks.
Notice the checklist on back and all the requirements that were met in home, there were several that were checked off, so.
Yes.
Thank you for a great job.
Anybody have any other questions about the report?
Most of them will receive their report.
I have a motion and a second to receive that report. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Excuse me. Next thing we'd like to do is to receive the January 2015 financial statement. I'm sure we've all reviewed that line by line, and I'll make a motion to be approved the financial statement. Second. We have a second? Any other discussion? Questions on that financial statement? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next thing we'd like to do is have the administrator.
Thanks, Mayor. First thing we have is a report on, council asked for a report on the retail coach, and Casey is in California this week at the World Ag Trade Center. So she couldn't be here, but she did send a memo, and I think you have it in your packet. Aaron Farner was here on February the 5th, looking at our trade area and interviewing a few people, and kind of getting some groundwork laid out for their study, so that's underway. City Health and Annual Wellness Clinic on February the 4th, the EMC came out, we had 38, I think, participants, employees and spouses that are covered on our instrument, so that's a pretty good turnout there. On February the 25th, city desponsored a blood drive, be here at City Hall. And also, I've included in your packet the legislative update that we got Friday. I encourage you to read through some of the bills that are filed, and make you feel really good about the legislation that y'all do here as compared to the legislation being proposed in Austin. That's all I've got, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Counselor, any other comments?
Yes, and there's a copy of, that I gave everyone, from the TML president and from the Texas Municipal League. I had mentioned before that Governor Abbott had made some statements about cities and their ordinance cities, and Texas becoming California. Anyway, the executive board felt that we needed to let the governor know that we wanted local control, and that's, we didn't want that taken away. And so I thought that the letter that President Martinez wrote up was very positive, it just had stated about, you know, being in partnership with them, that TML does represent over 1,100 cities in the state of Texas, and so I thought it was very well done. And so I wanted everyone to have a copy, should you be led personally to let the governor know as well, and we can kind of format that according to this current letter. But I thought that that sent a message that TML is alive and well, and that we can make decisions on our own for our own city, and we're not like other cities, and no cities alike, we're all very unique, and we want to keep that local control. So I felt very good about that letter. Also, the Elected Officials Conference will be February 12 through the 14th, and so I will be attending that. I will also be giving a presentation about youth council in the conference. And I'm very blessed that I've been able to be a certified municipal official for five years in a row, but that also brings recognition to the City of Milschuu. And so the City of Milschuu will be receiving an award of excellence, and I'll bring that back and present it to you, and that's a great recognition for the city. The Texas Town and City Magazine that we received, a few years back, I was interviewed as a council member, and I've asked, I've been asked to give another interview regarding our youth council. And I helped the City of Port Lavaca start a youth council, so I'll also be interviewing that sponsor as well, because they started one, and they've done a terrific job too. So Milschuu is getting its name out there, and the things that are happening here, and I'm very appreciative of the community, and the staff, and the council members, and with all that support and encouragement.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm good.
Okay. Thanks again to everybody for being here, appreciate it, and I guess we are adjourned.